On the minutes, are there any changes or questions on the minutes from last month's meeting of May 15?
No.
I make a motion to the minutes be accepted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next matter of business is the Martin McHugh 200 Lake Surprise Road. It's a planning board referral for subdivision between the applicant and Martin McHugh, John McHugh, Patricia McHugh, Mary McHugh, and Hiroshima Mia, I guess. The properties are located at Lake Surprise Road. You're handling that, right?
Yes.
Can you explain it to us, what's going on?
Yes.
What you're looking for?
Thank you. Look, McHugh's owned about 60, I think it's 67 acres.
Mike.
Lake. All right. McHugh's owned 67 acres on Lake Surprise Road. This is land that was inherited by four siblings, the McHughes. They want to divide the property up. Essentially, three of the siblings live outside the area, and one, Mary McHugh, lives next door to this property. So she wants to increase her personal holdings by taking her share out of the land that the siblings own. The remainder of the land will probably be put up for sale by the siblings after this adjustment is made. So we've applied to the planning board to adjust the lot line. And what you see outlined in solid red is all of the property owned by the siblings, including the land that Mary McHugh owns with her husband. And the present division line between the two properties is this dashed red line. We want to move that lot line such that it disappears, and the new lot line is the green line, which will make Mary McHugh's property bigger, and it will make the remaining land owned by the siblings smaller. If you look closely at the map down in the southwest corner of the property, you'll see there's a little bit of frontage, about 20 feet along Lake Surprise Road. That frontage and the other frontage owned by the siblings is not enough to satisfy the current zoning requirements. So when we make the adjustment, if we get the variance we asked for, that frontage will go down to even less than is required. It had plenty until the zoning change in 2011. Now it has less. We could accomplish our goal by making a flagpole along that southerly line to get that frontage. But for those of you who know that particular part of the property, this southwest corner is roughly opposite Deer Hollow Road, and there's a precipitous drop from the road down to the Foundry Brook. So there's really very little point in making that flagpole out to get that additional frontage, except to meet the technical requirements of the law. We think it makes more sense to seek the variance, to reduce the frontage a little bit further, so that we have one contiguous piece of property. We avoid an odd geometric configuration simply to meet the requirements of the law, and we're seeking your relief to allow that. I think it's about a 20-foot additional variance.
Right, so you're looking for 20 foot less than it is now?
Roughly, yeah.
Roughly, you know, give or take.
Right.
Exactly. You're before the planning board on the subdivision, right?
Before the planning board on the subdivision. They, of course, can't approve it because we're substandard. I said additional variance. Actually, it's a new variance, not an additional one. They are pre-existing, non-conforming as to the frontage that they have now.
Okay. In order for you to go back to the, you have to get this approved in order to go back to the planning board?
Either I have to get it approved, or I have to reconfigure the lot.
Or you have to put the flag line.
Yes.
Okay. Are there any questions?
Yeah, what is the acreage on the two areas?
It's all in here. The, I have to correct myself. The total area is 75 acres.
That's the total owned by the siblings?
Yeah, that's the total owned by everybody.
Okay.
I guess it was 67. And Mary, for her cell phone's about 7. She will be getting another 16, so she'll end up owning 23, and the 16 will come off the 67, so that'll go down to 54.
Okay.
All right. Well, I see the application is here in the letter for the lot line, and the neighbors, you got a list of the adjoining neighbors to be notified. You have a short environmental assessment form here.
Yes.
That's for the lot line change?
It was submitted with the subdivision.
With the subdivision, okay. Any questions? Any board members know? Wanting? So exactly where's the driveway now to get in there? Glenn?
The driveway to get into Mary McHugh's property is up here by her garage, and there's a, well, there's a blow-up of that. The garage is right next to the road.
Okay.
The driveway to get into this property, there actually isn't a driveway, but they do have a right to use the neighbor's driveway down here at the other frontage. This area where we're seeking to lose the frontage on that lot, it's a, you'd need a rope to go down that.
All right, okay. Any questions? This time I make the motion that the application is complete.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I'll set it up for a public hearing for next meeting, which would be Monday, July 10.
Thank you very much.
Okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Good night. All right, next order of business is Homeland Towers. It says 40 Yesterday Drive. It's for a erection of 180-foot monopole cell tower. Okay. You are, I'm sorry?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Robert Gordioso with the Law Firm of Snyder &amp; Snyder on behalf of Homeland Towers and New York SMSA Limited Partnership.
Okay. I just want to say one thing before we get started. This is, I noticed there's some people in the audience here are interested in this, I'm sure. This is an application review, okay? What we're going to do is going to look and see what more information the board might require before we move forward with this, okay? When we get all the information, when the board's satisfied with all the information, then we will make the application complete. We will vote on that. And then we would set up a date for a public hearing. So it'll be nothing basically done tonight, except going through some of this information. We're not going to go through it all.
Does that mean you don't want any comments?
The rules are basically is supposed to be nothing from the public, as far as speaking. But this is too important for that, because I know people are affected by it. So if there's no interruptions, give me a courtesy, don't interrupt. When we get through what we've got to get through, I will give anybody a chance to speak. Okay? Okay. Okay, go ahead, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Again, Robert Gordioso with the Law Firm of Snyder &amp; Snyder on behalf of the applicants, Homeland Towers and New York SMSA Limited Partnership. The proposal's for a public utility wireless communication facility. It's off Route 9. We had on the plans 2,700, but I think the property was subdivided. We'll endeavor to get an E-911 address. I think the address that was listed on the agenda is actually the property owner's mailing address, so I don't think that's correct either. The actual location is off of Vineyard Road, which is the road that runs up the side of the property. We're proposing a 180-foot monopole with 12 panel antennas. The pole itself will be designed to support both future colocation of other wireless carriers, but also emergency service equipment, including from the county. We've also proposed a facility compound at the base. The tower itself does meet the height limitation of 195 feet. It also meets all of the setbacks, including the property line and residential zoning district setbacks. We did submit a number of documents. We submitted the forms with the authorization from the property owner.
All right, I'm going to go through all that.
Oh, okay, I apologize.
Probably the best one, I think, most of it. Otherwise, we'll just be running over each other.
Sure, okay.
Okay? Maybe you want, you can put your stuff on the table here, okay? Because I just want to go through these exhibits. I'm not going to read them all, but I want just a couple of things that I have questions on.
That's great. If I can just sit down then and just take notes about what that works.
Sure, sit down at the table. That would probably be the best. Save us all a lot of time. And I'm going to ask the board members to hold any questions until we go through it.
Thank you.
Okay? All right. I'm going to go with your letter first. Let's see, your letter to the board. Where'd I put it? Give me that letter. Yeah, the first letter, okay, yeah. Basically, it's your letter requesting a 180-foot tower and all that, okay? And then you put, you say there's 12 exhibits. So look at that letter. Actually, it's 13. If you look on a second page to it, you have two number 11s. You have 11 as area analysis, all right? So you want to make that correction? I know it's an attorney's letter. I know you guys don't make mistakes, but it's one right there.
No, I make plenty of them.
Okay.
That's correct, yeah.
So 11 will be 11, 12, 11, the second 11 will be 12, right? And number 12 will be 13. Okay? Now, after, we'll go over those briefly, but on the bottom here, you say, your last paragraph says, "Respect to the escrow fee, respect to request that any consultant retained by the Honorable Board be professional engineer qualified to perform any required reviews." Okay. Now, I retain the services of a town engineer, Ryan Gaynor, okay? And I retain the services of a RF technician by the name of Ronald Graff, G-R-A-I-F-F. Do you have any objections to that?
No objections.
No objections to that, okay. Also, one thing, when we do the site inspection, we're also going to be looking for a balloon test. I want a balloon to be the height and roughly circumference of the equipment you're going to have on it.
So we're happy to, we've already staked out the property. We're happy to have a site visit with the board. With respect to a balloon test, a couple things. The balloon, because it's heavily wooded, we would want to make sure that we had a date and a time that in case of inclement weather, we had an automatic rollover date and time. So that way, we didn't attempt to do a balloon test and waste, quite frankly, your time and everyone's time on a date that might be too windy or might be raining heavily. So we'd be happy to coordinate that if you wanted to do that this evening, or...
We could do that with your guy and Ryan Gaynor.
That would be great, thank you.
Okay. First article you got here is that the application itself. And what I'm saying is that, and the application looks fine. The only thing it says, it says wireless telecommunications service facility, but it doesn't get the height. You know what I'm trying to say? We could just change that to, just to put the height on it.
If you want to add the height, I would have an objection.
Yeah, I would. The height is 180 feet.
180 feet, correct.
There's a couple of different heights in here. Later on, I'll explain it to you.
So I think the only other differing height is the one from the FAA, which we usually make sure we have a little extra height.
There's a couple of different ones in there. We'll get to that.
Sure.
Okay, so I just want to know what it is. If it's 180 feet, I want to, you know, put that on there. Okay. All right. I keep losing this. Number two, number two is the no violations letter. Okay, that's good. That's, we're okay with that. There's no violations on the property.
Correct.
Number three is the vested deed for the property. That's fine. Number five is, what is it? Number four. Number four. Oh, number four is FAA aeronautical evaluation. Now, in that one, on page, actually on the first page, it's got the total height above the ground of the entire structure is 199 feet. I'll wait till you find it. It says it's 199 feet on it, so...
What it is, is we run, we run an analysis to give us the maximum height that we would be able to go without creating either FAA-required lighting or marking, or creating a hazard to air navigation. So what this shows is that we can go up to 199 feet without having to light or mark the proposed facility.
Okay.
So that was the purpose of that.
We're all in agreement that it's 180 feet.
But it is 180 feet, correct.
All right. Number five, structural certification letter. We got that, and that'll, Mr. Gaynor will work on that also, okay? Let's see. Number six, you have your Verizon Wireless propagation plots. What that is, is showing other sites in the area. You know, like Route 301, there's a big cell tower, Route 301, and everything else like that. So that's basically what that is. And that seems accurate.
And just, Mr. Chairman, I have to interrupt you, but just to confirm one thing. We did, we do agree with Mr. Gaynor's memo that we would be happy to provide additional information to the other consultant that you retained to his satisfaction on some of those additional propagation plots and information.
Great. On the propagation plot, you've got, the proposed tower Vineyard Road at Colesman, it's got 176 feet.
So the 176 feet is the center line of the antennas, which is where they measure the signal from and propagate the maps from. The top of the antenna will be no higher than 180 feet.
Okay. What do we got here? Number nine, the visual site assessment report. In that, he gives a, you're going to have, what, three other companies on this?
So we will build it to be able to support at least three other companies, but we only have it proposed for Verizon Wireless.
But you do have a possibility, because they have the feet here, 174, 164.
Sure.
So it is possible that you're going to, you could have three other companies on your tower.
The code requires that we build it for colocation, and we're happy to support that.
Okay. And you comply in assessment results, that's on page 13 of the same report. He uses a distance of 500 feet, okay? I guess that's with the theory that there isn't a house within 500 feet?
So it's, it's actually, they look at every, I think it's 10 or 20 feet going out to 500 feet.
Okay.
And there's actually a chart there showing what the maximum level would be for Verizon Wireless, and then we do a worst-case scenario, so we presume in the future that there is colocation, just as a worst-case scenario. Not every antenna will propagate at the same spot at its highest level, but we have a chart showing where each one would be going out to 500 feet at the highest level, and then we simply add them up to show a worst-case cumulative event. But it will never be actually at that maximum amount, but we show it as a worst-case scenario anyway.
Okay. Number eight, your long environmental assessment form. I'm not going to go over that, because we'll do that at a public hearing. I just have one question on it. On the, on the graphic maps you show, it would be item number, let's see, map number, figure one. You got a, it says on the bottom, Fish Gill West Site. That's this here.
Could I just come up and take a quick look?
Sure. I'm just not sure if it, see, it's down here.
Well, that's a typographical error.
Well, you got, you got them on a couple of pages, too, so you got to change them.
We'll have that corrected.
Okay. Now, you got here photo 10. Let me show you one. You got a photo 10. This with the red one?
Yes.
Okay. And here's where the tower is, right?
The yellow.
Yellow, okay. So that's indirect line?
Correct.
Okay. There's a house there.
There's the end of the road. That's the turnaround in that road when you go up the road and it doglegs around.
There's a house there. We're going to discuss that, okay? So we did number 10, the visual assessment, long environmental. Let's see, area, okay. This is done by Saratoga Associates. I guess it's the visual response, visual resource assessment.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
In reference to visual environmental assessment, probably resources, probably I would like, I would want to see a plan for visual abatement of the impact. In addition to that, it says here on number 11, alternate existing structures and everything, but it doesn't talk about different technologies, like a distributed antenna system or any of the other new technologies that would eliminate the need for a cell tower. I would like to see if they would provide us with a way of eliminating the cell tower and still getting what they need, and if they can prove to me that they can't do it that way, I would want to see a, an abatement plan on how to minimize the impact to the residents in the area.
All these things are going to be discussed between, like, our professionals and your professionals.
Good stuff.
Okay. But on page one of this report, that's the visual.
Sure.
I'll take, take a minute to pick it up. On the landscape setting, it's like on the first page, you see it?
Yes.
On the second paragraph, it says, "The tower site is approximately 2,050 feet northeast of US 9 and 1,570 feet southwest of 301. The nearest residential structure is approximately 750 feet northeast of the tower on Rockland Road." Okay? I think as we go further on down, I'm going to show to you that may be incorrect.
Okay.
Okay? I just want you to note that, just, I'm going to show you where I believe that that's not correct. In their photographs, which are very good, gives you the simulated view and everything else like that. It is very good. They give us, they give you a simulated view of a cell tower with just one setup.
Array. We call it an array?
Yeah, yeah. Seeing that, there's a good possibility that you may be co, you know, maybe other people. Would it be possible for them to Photoshop in something that would represent what actually may be there?
We could certainly look at that.
You know, talking about, yeah, a couple of extra, you know, because we're looking at, we're looking at one tower, but...
What tower is it?
I'm sorry, here, notice here. Now, you got a picture here, figure 7B of these photos. You want to take a look at it? That's in the back. That's in, that is in, that'll be still in 10. Still in 10. It's these big photos here, so...
The big ones, okay.
Yeah.
And which one, 7B you said?
I want to look at photo 7B. You don't have it? Yeah, you open them, yeah. Go to 7B. It's a simulated condition of a house on Round Hill Road.
Okay.
Okay. That is 60 Round Hill Road, because I was up there, and I looked at everything, okay?
Okay.
Now, he's got, and there again, he's got 980 feet distance.
Okay.
Okay? I don't believe that to be correct. I think it's closer than that, and I'll show you why later on. But I just want you to make a note for something that, when I get to my point, you'll understand why. Okay. Let's see, 11 is a copy of the filed wetlands permit. That's fine. That's up for the Wetlands Bureau to take care of. And then you have, I want to get to the site plan. Okay. You have your site plan, the big one? Open it up if you would, please. And it'll be on the second page. Second page, in relation to the tower, there's a piece of property that says Section 39, Block 2, Lot 2.14. Do you see that? Would be right by Round Hill Road. See where Round Hill Road is? Yeah. 39, Block 2, Section 21.4. That's, belongs to Mr. and Mrs. Gorbeck, I guess, the 60 Round Hill Road. Okay. Now, this is my point, and I was talking about the distances. This survey was done by Beadie and Watson. He's using a scale of 1 inch for 150 feet. On the bottom, do you see that, sir?
I do.
Okay. I'm not an engineer, but my measurements is 2 and 1/2 inches, so that means that's 375 feet. So that puts a house well within, you know, it's not your 750 or your 990, it's 350, or 375. Now, you could go have him do it exactly, but you can look at that yourself. I got a ruler if you want to look at it.
I'll double-check it. I'm not an engineer, though.
Sure. So my concern is that the house is in direct line of that at 375 feet. That's my concern. All right. That finishes me. I don't think any questions from any of the, any questions, anything like that? Yeah, I think pretty much, I think you'll look at those things and you'll get back to us, you know? Now, you understand why I'm saying about, you know, it says there's nothing within 750 feet? That's not, I don't believe that to be correct.
And we'll double-check that.
Right, okay. What you could, I would like to get back to you, something with some kind of thing, by next month if possible.
Sure.
Our next month's meeting. Okay, so we have that, because it makes a big difference to somebody who lives there.
Sure.
Anything else?
Just, I'll take the mic, right at the back.
Turn it on, okay.
Oh, that's just, not yours?
Oh, that's me, yes. All right, okay.
Yeah, I think it's on, I think it's this month, isn't it? You were just...
Got it?
Yeah, I think that's it.
All right, so that's it, I guess, for now, okay?
I think there were some recommendations in Mr. Gaynor's memo, which we have no objection to.
Oh, you're right.
As far as sending it to the county and sending the notices out.
I'm glad you brought up that, thank you. Yes, let's do that. There's some recommendations, and you got a copy of his memo. I got this this morning. We don't have to go over more right now, but on the back, he's got the summary of things that the board could do. We may be able to do some of these things this evening to, you know, I don't want to hold this up any more than I have to, because it is complicated. In summary, he says, "Mr. and Mrs., the board may wish to consider taking the following actions at your meeting. Formally acknowledge the application as a major site plan." Okay. Do we have to take a vote on that, or...
I would make a motion to do that.
I make a motion that we designate this as a major site plan.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's anonymous. Anonymous, anonymous, anonymous. Board secretary should make sure, required referral to the Putnam County Department of Planning. Linda? All right, so you'll notify the county, because it is by Route 9.
I agree. That should go to the county.
Agreed, okay. Yeah, because formally notice, issue notice to adjacent municipalities and to PC Bureau Emergency Services of the tower application.
We will be happy to take care of that.
You agree with that?
That's required by your code. We agree with that.
Okay. Schedule a site inspection of the property, evaluate any potential environmental or visual concerns. Okay, that's the one we discussed about the balloon.
Do you have a preference, Mr. Chairman, to do it on a weekend or a weekday?
Well, yeah, I don't, I don't, what does the board feel? Me, I'm retired, so it's okay with me.
Yeah, I'd rather do it on a weekday, myself.
Weekday?
Weekday.
Weekday, a weekday.
And what we would typically recommend is doing it in the morning when the winds are generally the lightest. So if I can maybe work with some, with Mr. Gaynor on some potential dates, as I mentioned before, give you some rollover dates, because what we wouldn't want to do is put the balloon up, and there'd be 10-mile or 15-mile an hour winds and not get an accurate representation of it.
That's fair enough. All right, so we agree on everything, right?
I think, I think that's about as much as...
On that part. The other part, we're going to have...
What we can do with what we spoke about.
The decision's gonna work out, but we agree on this.
Agreed.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, anything else from you?
Oh, the only other- The only other issue was, um, uh, whether you intended to do a coordinated or uncoordinated review. I don't know if there are any other involved agencies, so I'm not sure if it requires a coordinated review.
I didn't, I didn't investigate into that at all. I tend to agree with the applicant's attorney, but I do not believe there's anyone else that's specifically involved.
You don't believe there's anybody else involved? But, uh, it's so, well, we know the Putnam County has to be notified.
That's a 239M referral, that's, that's not relative to the environmental review.
Okay, so, so there's one then with the applicants that formally, uh, notified just a municipality, is that what you're saying? They don't have to do that?
No, we'll notify them.
All of that is statutory, they have to do that.
Right.
The issue of declaring yourself, uh, your intent to be lead agency is only if there's other, other involved agencies that are subject to granting this a similar permit to you.
Right. And we would be the lead agency on this.
If, if there's none, there's no harm in not taking any action on CIGR at this point.
I agree.
So, uh, you can just move forward with the discussion of a site visit.
Yeah, I, I would not take any action tonight on that. When we get more information, then we'll make that declaration.
There's not gonna be no, there's no decision tonight, you understand that?
No, I understand.
We're just trying to get things together.
Absolutely, we're dealing with housekeeping at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I'm gonna give, uh, people in the audience, I know they're, you know, let me explain to you, this is, you're gonna have plenty of time to talk at a public hearing, okay? Uh, tonight was, was just some things that we wanted to get out, you know, you know, like I said, the distances of things with the houses was a concern to mind, other things, and we've agreed on pretty much everything, except we've gotta figure out the distance, on more, there's a distance from 60 Round Hill to there. So that's, that's one of the big things. But, uh, I'm gonna give everybody a chance to talk, but I'm gonna ask you to do is come up and just sign the signing sheet, okay? If you want, who would like to speak?
My side.
You would, okay, come on up.
What should I sign?
Uh, there's a, there's a sheet over here, a signing sheet, and we just sign your name there, so this way the secretary will have, she'll have it for her minutes.
Oh.
Okay, now go back to the mic, okay?
I'm not entirely sure what's appropriate, and I expect you'll tell me if-
Give me your name and address.
Callie Gorbak, 60 Round Hill Road.
60 Round Hill Road, okay.
Yeah. Um, will we be-
You got a beautiful view anyway, that house, I gotta tell you, that's a heck of a view.
Yeah, well, so far, so far.
That is, that is gorgeous. All right, go ahead.
Uh, will we be informed about the balloon test?
Uh, yes, I, I will inform you about the balloon test.
Okay.
I lost my answer. And the other thing is, I don't understand about the, the co-agency thing, isn't the Conservation Board also involved?
Well, the Conservation Board, uh, they're gonna determine it with the wetlands permit, because there's two ponds there.
Right.
And everything else like that. But from my understanding, they don't have public hearings, meetings, do they, Conservation Board? No, I think they just, they, I think maybe if you would look at it, make a decision to issue a wetlands permit.
Uh-huh. So we don't get a, an opportunity to-
No, we don't get too much of a say to it, I don't think, you know?
Okay, well, um, in that case-
What, do you have a wetland, do you have a wetlands issue beside those two ponds?
I, no, that, that's, that is the issue.
That was it, yeah, the two ponds, yeah. I, I was up there, I'd spend a lot of time there looking around to see.
Yeah, no, I, I can tell what you did, and I appreciate it very much. Um, well, all right, I just wanna say two things. When this property for the cellphone tower was designated commercial, it was attached to Cybertron. Then Mr. Spanoo bought the Cybertron building but did not buy the rest of the, the property that was designated commercial along with it. So, I'd like to think that it could be looked at, again, from a different perspective, so that if it's not necessary for that to be designated commercial, why, why would it be?
The 1996 Telecommunications Act doesn't require them to be in a commercial zone. They can be anywhere they want.
Oh, okay.
It's federal government law.
Yeah, I, I've actually been reading it, thank you, appreciate it. Um, just one other thing, uh, cell towers have, um, a little bit of history with, uh, fires and collapses, and I'm concerned as to how it would be possible for the fire department to even access this particular location, and where would they get the water from? And this is our only way off of Round Hill is down that road, so if something were to happen to the cell tower, we wouldn't be able to get out.
Well, the, the fire, the, the, the location is gonna be right off of Vineland Road.
Mm-hmm.
And I know that road goes up, and it's a, what is it, just before it gets to Round Hill.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's gonna, pretty much in that area.
Yeah.
Okay, so they're gonna have to put a 12-foot wide, uh, road in there to go into the location. It wouldn't affect the road, it wouldn't affect Vineland Road, it would be off Vineland, like a driveway, let's say, to, in access in order to get to where they have to get to.
Right.
So, as far as the fire department, like the rest of us, I, I don't have, I don't have any agents either, so I guess they'd have to get the water from the truck. You know, I mean, you know, the, any house up here that doesn't have a fire agent, they have to bring the water from the pumping trucks.
Hmm.
Under time.
That's interesting, because there is the potential for a forest fire if conditions were right, and if there was a cellphone, a cell tower fire. I do have some statistics on this, which I would like to share with you, um, because I've been doing research.
Okay.
Let me just step away from here for a moment. I brought one for everybody.
Okay. You gotta understand also, you're gonna have a, you're gonna have a chance to speak at the public hearing, too.
I do want to-
I'm just giving everybody, I'm just giving everybody, I just, yeah, giving everybody the courtesy tonight, 'cause you're here.
Okay, thank you.
She's gonna have to re-present this at the public hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would suggest that, this is not, I mean, we're, we'll welcome your comments.
Right.
Just so we're clear, this is not a public hearing, uh, we're, we're not even close to a public hearing.
Okay, so that's a whole document?
I mean, I can't tell you not to, but I think it would make more sense in terms of, actually, if you wanted to introduce something into the record at the public hearing, it makes sense to introduce it in the record at the public hearing, 'cause this is simply a review for completeness. The application is not complete, we need various items of information, um, really, we're simply gonna be scheduling a balloon test at this juncture, and we're, we're not even scheduling a public hearing tonight.
I understand.
So, I, I just think it makes sense to do it that way, but-
Okay.
Okay. Just if you want, but what I'm trying to explain is that the public hearing is, could be all night, is what I'm trying to say, you know, all depends on how many people wanna talk, so you could, you could present it then, but if you wanna present it, you wanna drop it off to, you wanna give it to our secretary, that's fine, whatever you feel. And do me a favor for you, will you give her your home phone number?
Sure.
Because I said I would call you, so I don't have your number, so, okay. Is there anything else?
No.
Okay. Next person, next person, okay. If you would just sign your name and print it, print it so she could, 'cause I can't read my writing, so. Okay, will you step back there and introduce yourself, please, sir?
Yeah, I'm Roger Gorbak, it's my wife, we live at 60 Round Hill Road. Obviously, through the discussion and listening to what you've been saying, I'm actually encouraged that you've obviously taken a good look at this thing. There's a lot of mistakes. Mistakes are not acceptable. We're talking about impact that's gonna have on our lives for the rest of our lives up here, and that's not something we take lightly, and I would appreciate if you do your homework properly. Um, the fact is, there are all these different heights that have been thrown at, 180, 176, 199, they don't keep changing, but we somehow managed to fall 1 foot short of the FAA. I'd like to know what the migration habit is of the birds that go by here, and I wanna know that from, uh, the Audubon Society. I, these things we'll bring up, well, these, these things we'll bring up tomorrow at-
There is a report in here from the wildlife, something about endangered bats or something like that, yeah, right.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're worried about endangered species, we're worried about, about turtles that we've seen up there, that we've sent to the DEC already, that they, they have said are very interesting, and I'd like to see further on it. There's a lot of things that go on up here. I saw a very unfortunate thing happen up there. We had a hawk that lived there for five years. I know this doesn't sound important to everybody, this hawk was a beautiful, beautiful bird. Unfortunately, a fence has been built up there, they didn't have the proper markings, and the bird went straight into the fence, and that's the end of the bird. And this is what goes on, and we have to be careful and protect our society and protect our environment. I don't want 180-foot cell tower coming in, I don't think it's appropriate for this area. We have Hudson Highland Trust, we have Scenic Hudson, we have OSI, everybody's trying to protect this area. And I think we have to rethink about what's important to us, and how we go forward. It, will it impact our lives? We can get into a discussion of cancer, we can get into a discussion of radio waves, you can go to the two different schools, you can listen to, obviously, the utilities and who they've hired, saying, "There's no problem." Then you can go to the other side and talk about cell phones, cell towers, and the impact that that's gonna have. The fact is, we live here, we moved up here, we love this area. We don't wanna see it messed up by bringing in a, a tower that may not necessarily need to be 180. I think the question was a wonderful question tonight, is that really something you have to do? Maybe you could do a 100-foot tower, maybe there are other ways today, and we don't have to change the beautiful environment that we've set up here. This is something that's very important to us, we're very, we're very passionate about it.
I can understand it.
And it's not something that, it's not something we wanna deal with. I'm very happy to hear the questions that were asked.
Well, I, we just got this-
Because I came in and saw, saw the same mistakes you did.
We just got this application last week, thanks to both our wonderful secretary-
No, I appreciate that.
-who was able to get it to us a week early anyway, so we could review it.
Yeah.
So there's gonna be a lot of review here.
I appreciate it.
And I, I'm sure that Verizon is going to supply the things that we asked for, so this is not a combative thing.
No, no, we're not looking past a fight, we just want answers.
Right, you know, as far as the Audubon thing and all that, you know, I understand what you're saying, there is one here about, about wildlife, something about endangered bats or something, I really haven't had a chance to look at it, okay?
I haven't even thought about those.
I'm not talking endangered bats, I just haven't had a chance to look at it, okay? So, uh, we'll do that as we go along, you know?
Okay, as long as we can-
There's gonna be, I'll explain to you-
As long as we can feel that we're being consulted, because this affects our lives.
No, I definitely-
It affects your lives, it affects everybody else.
I asked your wife to leave the phone, I will personally call.
I appreciate that.
Okay?
That's all I wanna say.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else would like to speak? No? Okay, uh, at that point, what we're gonna do is, I'm gonna, uh, set up a, next meeting would be July 10th, okay? And do you think that you could have reports to us by then, Mr. Gainer?
Certainly.
Okay, and, and all the things we, we would over tonight. One more thing I forgot, uh, in your, one of the forms here, it says that, uh, the cell tower is needed in the area because of lack of coverage, okay?
Coverage, ma'am.
Could you provide us with a list from Verizon of all the people in the area who've called up and complained about lack of coverage?
You know, that's not how they design the system as far as complaints.
Yeah, well, you gotta prove to me, how can you prove to me there's a lack of coverage?
Well, what they do is they have a design criteria, that a certain signal level is necessary for the, uh, mobile devices to properly function. They actually test the signal in the real world, they, they do two ways, they actually test it with a test vehicle, collect the signal in real world time, uh, they also run propagation maps to be able to compare to the drive test signal, 'cause the drive test signal's only on roadways, whereas the propagation map looks at the whole area.
Right.
Uh, and then they're able to see where there's actually significant gaps in coverage.
Right, 'cause I could see that, there's, there's a cell tower there, uh, like, maybe a little more than half a mile away, I think there's one, and there's another one a mile and a quarter, but the one at, at Fornstock is like, going 200 and something, 250 feet high or something like that.
Yeah, the problem with Fornstock, if you look at the maps we already did submit, is that it doesn't get down into the valley, it doesn't get down into the Route 931 corridor.
Ron, if you, our engineer, if you would work with the RFL, the other fellow-
And again, we've identified in our initial, just in the state review, that there's additional RF technical data that has to be provided by the applicant, so that, that the middle remains to be accomplished.
And we don't have any objections to that.
No objections to that, okay.
Yep.
One, one thing I had forgotten about this, I was looking at the maps, none of them say what the DB reading is in the affected area before you put the cell tower in. It would be nice to know what the signal strength is before, before, uh, you would build the tower.
Sure.
So, if you could add that, that would be helpful.
Not a problem.
I'd like to know, um, is this cell tower dedicated for data or for cell coverage? Because, and the reason I ask that is, uh, we had another, uh, cell tower, um, modification, uh, maybe a year or so ago, and, uh, Verizon told us that it would improve cellphone coverage in the area, and it didn't. So, um, what is this for? Is this for data, or is this for cellphone coverage?
Sure, so, when people, when people used to say data, the reference was to strictly using it for the internet.
Right.
Strictly using your mobile device, whether it's your phone, your laptop, your tablet, to connect to the internet and do whatever you may do on the internet. The new mobile, um, technologies, uh, you see on the, on the TV and on the radio, LTE, um, what that really means is that's, that's a way that they provide that mobile data, but they're also now providing voice calls over the mobile data. So in the old days, the voice call would go to the cellphone tower, it would connect into the public telephone switching network. Now, with the new technologies, they're able to connect that voice call, um, which you may have heard the word VoIP or, uh, V-O-L-T-E, Volti, uh, those calls are actually routed by way of data packets into the internet and routed that way. So, it's both, to answer your question.
Okay, as far as scheduling goes, our next meeting, that is scheduled for next meeting is Monday, July 10th, okay? The board doesn't meet in August, 'cause, uh, a vacation and whatnot like that, we don't have a thing, so, next meeting after that would be September 11th, okay? So, if we can get all the information by July 10th, if you guys work together, you know, and everything we asked for, we can get and all that, then we could possibly look at, uh, an application completion, maybe set up a meeting for September. If it's not there, then at the September meeting, then it would be in October.
That's fair.
I'm just trying to give you a time for it.
I, I appreciate that, and, and speaking of schedule, because you mentioned July 10th, I think we wanna have that balloon test before then, I would assume.
Uh, yes.
And we have that July 4th weekend, which, which is a weird, I think it's a Tuesday this year.
Well, we're, I-
So, I think we probably wanna have the balloon test in June, right?
Yeah, a lot of people-
I mean, that's what I'm, that's what I'm getting at, Mr. Lim, I think we wanna do that sooner than later.
Yeah.
Right?
So probably, yeah, it would do, uh, probably towards the end of this month, maybe, something like that.
Okay, well, I'll work with Mr. Gray and kind of look at those dates.
He'll call me, and I'll call, uh, the gentleman over there, and, you know, and, and, this way everybody's on the same page.
Fair enough.
That's all we're looking for.
Absolutely.
I'm not looking, we're looking to get all the information and get this going one way or the other.
We agree, thank you very much for your time.
Of the, of the interest, have it during the week or around the weekend?
During the week.
All right, and you were talking about morning, we wanna do it before-
Well, I'd like to have it up for a few hours, I mean, I don't want, I don't want a 30-second balloon.
It wouldn't be.
No, yeah, we agree with that.
Yeah, yeah. You know, gotta have it up for, you know, six, seven hours, I would want it up, five hours.
Six, seven hours, it'll never, I'll, I'll tell you this, it'll never stay up that long.
How long will it last?
A couple hours would be reasonable.
Can we get four hours out of it?
Well, we could try, I mean, typically, no more than four.
Eight to 12.
Eight to 12 will never, it'll never stay up eight to 12, it'll get caught in the trees, it'll pop, it'll, it'll blow in the wind.
No, no, he meant, he meant the time he's talking about.
Oh, I, I would think, yes, I would think eight, I'm sorry, you caught me off-guard with that one. We would shoot for 8 o'clock in the morning, absolutely.
Right.
So, we're, we're looking for like, 8 to 12.
Okay.
And if it comes down before 12 or something like that, you know?
Yeah, but we'd wanna meet you out there by 8, just to make sure that-
Then you'll have to blow it up again, that's all, you'll have to-
No, we bring extras, it's just, I, I, I don't wanna mislead you and let, let you think the balloon's gonna stay stationary, 'cause it will not, so.
All right, there will be in touch with Mr. Blue Test.
You've done this once, twice.
We'll be, yeah, we've been, we did it for several different things.
Sure, okay.
So we'll be, uh, in touch with Mr. Gainer.
Yeah, we'll work out some dates.
And with your guy, with your engineer and your people, we'll work it out together.
Absolutely, okay.
Does any of the individual members have any, um, periods during work week where it can't be, do you have any scheduled time off or vacations?
No, not-
Or just about any of the group?
Not, not in the last week of, of June, I don't think. Last week of June would be, would, would be, uh, a, a good day, or something like that, you know? If not, we could always have, take photographs or something like that, if somebody was able to make-
We'll make them do that anyway.
Yeah, you make them take the photographs anyway, so that we have it, so we, this way it's a permanent record.
Okay.
Okay. And I'd like the photographs, if possible, to be taken from, if he doesn't mind, 60 Round Hill.
Yeah, we would just need the consent to, to step on the property.
The back of their home, he'll give you permission.
Sure.
You know, give him permission for them to go there.
We can coordinate that that day.
Okay, you take the photos from there, because that's what I'm interested in, that's my, what my mind is at. I wanna see exactly where it is.
Okay.
Okay?
Well, thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate it, thank you.
Uh, just time to make a motion, re- adjourn a meeting? All in favor? All right?
All right.
Good, thank you.